Okay, good evening, everyone. Since I see we have a quarter minute, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting in order. I'll please stand up for the quick regents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we got you on.
You're late. You're late. Item A. We need a motion to approve the minutes from February 12th, 2024 regular meeting, February 13th, 2024 budget workshop, and February 26th, 2024 regular meeting. I'll take a motion, including all three, or individually, over the board.
So moved.
So moved is our second. We move the motion. John with the second. And discussion on minutes. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting approving the minutes signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction?
Sorry. No, that was not an opposition. Sorry. That's an aye.
You sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay. The motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item B, additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Oh. Can we add a motion to approve the plan to increase educator diversity?
Okay. We have a motion on air to approve the educator diversity plan that Missy's going to discuss. Do we have a second for that motion to put it on the agenda for tonight?
A second for motion.
We have a second from John. Any discussion or questions? You can have some later after Missy discusses it. We'll put that item D, Missy.
Sure. We'll recommend action.
Oh, I'm sorry. Recommended action. I'm sorry. Six P. Okay. Item C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. None, so now we'll go good. Student rep, you're right on the ball.
You're solo tonight?
Yeah, I am. So, starting with Allgrove. Allgrove kids participated in our kids' heart challenge during P.E. class with Mr. Dutton. Thank you to a partnership between East Granby Youth Services and Love on a Leash. We love having Mindy, Andy, and Rusty come visit us at Allgrove School and allowing our students to read to them. Kindergarten art students created hearts in the style of American artist Alma Woodsey Thomas, who was the first Black female artist to have a solo exhibition at the Whitney Museum of American Art. Moving on to Seymour. PTO has announced their Butterbread Pastries and Joyful Tradition Cake Rolls fundraiser to help Allgrove and Seymour's PTO. Sales started February 19th and end today. All orders will be delivered on March 26th, just in time for the spring holiday season. The PTO is also holding its annual school supply drive for our wonderful teachers. Seymour's opening with Garden Club, hosted by Alicia Cruz from Nourish My Soul, where students will learn how to garden from planting to starting a garden bed. Through a series of skits, a fifth-grade class taught the students in Seymour School loved their passengers. This is the fourth rule in the Energy Bus for Kids book. During their library/technology block, fourth graders joined the world of Minecraft to learn all about loops and functions as part of a coding unit. Toby, a therapy dog, visited some classrooms and small groups on Friday. We're looking forward to his next visit. As Easter is approaching, East Granby Parks and Rec is conducting its annual Easter egg hunt for Seymour students, where food items will be donated to our local food pantry. Progressing to the middle school, congratulations to East Granby Middle School's February students, which are Peyton McPherson, grade six, Nathan Borden, grade seven, and Whitney Johnson, grade eight. Our life skills teacher, Eugenia Semayanko, was witnessed by Irene O'Connor from the WFSB3 Surprise Squad on February 22nd. They came to celebrate her dedication and passion in her teaching craft, and her students were given an opportunity to celebrate her in their interviews with Mrs. O'Connor. Ms. Semayanko was most definitely surprised by the visit and sincerely moved that she was recognized. We look forward to the telecast of the news clip in the near future, which should be in the next couple of weeks. We are excited for the upcoming East Granby Middle School and East Granby High School show Into the Woods Junior, which is scheduled to be performed in auditorium from Tuesday, March 21st through Saturday, March 23rd. We have several East Granby Middle School students involved in the performance and hope to see the community come out to celebrate their hard work and effort. At East Granby Middle School, eighth grade students performed a read aloud of some of their favorite childhood books to their peers. Over at Seymour, Mr. Phelan made a guest appearance in Mrs. Karlowitz's class on the same day. It was nice meeting some of our rising sixth graders for 2024 through 2025. Some of our students at East Granby Middle School made a trip to East Granby Public School to Public Library to have some fun at the Dry Ice Workshop. Last week, 12 students from East Granby Middle School.
Water break.
Relax. You took a breath.
Last week, 12 students from East Granby Middle School participated in the Northern Region Middle School Festival on March 8th through 9th, 2024. These students auditioned in December, were accepted into the festival, and then prepared music for the festival. Ryan Hamilton and Ian Griffith participated in the band, while Mackenzie Cormier, Kai Hazard, Kayla Langiel, Morgan McKinney, Rachel Mullane, Logan Nicole, Bennett Stafford, Lily Thompson, Quinn Thompson, and Nahemai Victor participated in the mixed choir. They did an amazing job, and we are so proud of the beautiful music they created this past weekend. Finally, our high school. On March 8th, our 23rd annual pops concert, A Night at the Movies 2024, took place. Thank you to Ms. Shaloo and Ms. Klobler, and all the students, staff, and parents for working so hard to put on this fantastic show each year. Mr. Dammela was privileged to read to the street first grade five class for Seymour's Readers Are Leaders. Dodgeball tournament was a huge success, and it was a great night for all the high school students who attended. Our East Granby High School Student of the Month is Kiran Beeman. A volleyball tournament is coming up soon on March 19th. Juniors will be taking the SAT on March 20th. The East Granby High School Counseling Department wants to say a farewell to our leader, Mrs. Ledbeater. We wish you the best on a new journey. Students from Mandrela Civic class volunteered at the Northern Connecticut Veterans Association Easter Bunny Breakfast this past weekend. Juniors and seniors are invited on a field trip to tour as non-tier community college and learn about the opportunities offered. Congratulations to Mira Goberman and Clever Majors. They are the East Granby High School recipients of the 2024 Connecticut Association of School Fine Arts Award. Each year, two students are chosen for their excellence in visual and performing arts. We appreciate their contributions to our program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Who won the dodgeball game?
It was a senior. It was a group of seniors, the senior boys.
Cool.
Yeah.
Nice report. Thank you.
Yes, very impressive going as on.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Ms. Do you have a hit?
I don't. We spoke a couple weeks ago or last week, right? And I'm enjoying talking with both Tom Vieneva. And we'll just keep following up with that.
Thank you for giving your time and coming on Monday night to report to us. Appreciate it.
I have a quick question. What would be your thoughts of if there was ever where you spoke to some Allgrove and Seymour kids and got their feedback about things? Like, if they were to tell you their favorite things? If there was ever that opportunity, if the school could arrange that, would that be something you would be interested in? Like, what's your...
My opinion on what, Seymour?
No, no. Like, if you... We were talking about it at a communications meeting. If you guys were to be mentors almost to, like, a few Seymour and Allgrove kids, and they told you, like, so you could say, "Oh, we heard you did this. Tell us about it, so we can share with the board," and get some of their thoughts, like their voice. What's your thoughts on that?
I actually do that every single time, because I have a sister.
Oh, perfect. I love that guy.
A Seymour student. So, like, she, like, helps me with every single thing that would come to Seymour.
That's great.
So, that helps me, I guess.
Yeah. So, would that be if you... If there was, like, an Allgroves too, a few that you could talk to, just to get, like, their cute little aspect of, like, things? You know what I mean? That's what we were talking about.
Yeah. That would definitely help, because obviously I gain a lot from my sister, so...
Yeah, that's awesome that you're able to talk to her, and she can share things. That's nice. Cool.
Thank your sister for us, too.
Yeah. She's got a big impact. It's great.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Item three, chairperson's report. Just like to report that the administrator's contract was unanimously approved at a town meeting last week in a community center. Next week, we have a presentation with the Board of Finance Tuesday night for our budget presentation of showing they requested 5.25% increase. And on March 27th, we have a budget workshop, 5:00 p.m. for the Board of Ed. It'll be an important one. And that's the end of my report. Item four, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms.
We have a few personnel shifts that I would like to share. We have Ms. Anne Dugan, who has been at Allgrove School for a large number of years. She will be retiring. She is looking forward to that. She has served a number of roles and a very best-dressed, you know, through our school for many years. But she's been extremely helpful and certainly loves our kids and loved our kids, and we wish her the best in retirement. Michelle Ledbeater, who has been our guidance secretary, has resigned for another career path. She has been extremely helpful and very competent and efficient in that office. We will miss her, but we certainly wish her well as she continues just another pathway. We also have Aiden Walsh, who will join us as the junior varsity baseball coach. Aiden is an East Granby graduate, and he has been working with Coach Dutton in a volunteer capacity for a last number of years. So, he's very excited to join the ranks of that coaching staff. John Campagna was still employed, God bless you, as a part-time custodian. He has accepted a full-time professional job within our district. So, he has joined us in the middle school, which is excellent. He's very excited, and we're happy to have him. That reopened our Seymour part-time custodian position, and we are welcoming back Jason Mel, who was in it, in that role about a year ago, and had to leave for some personal reasons, but he is happy to join us back. And so, he has started last week.
Wish them all well. Very exciting news for them. Some of it sad for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, for sure. Zone our update. We are in the next phase. We had a couple... We have a couple staff members testing out the app, and we have had some conversations with a few districts that use a similar app and have gone through their FAQs and talked to them about some of their, I don't want to say blockade, but some of their barriers, so that we can kind of anticipate some of the questions and concerns. So, at the... After this board meeting, if there's anyone on the board with children who would like to be the next piece of this, Mary can give you the information after.
Okay.
So, we're reviewing it. Actually, Mary's one who's tracking the buses.
Do you count buses when they go to sleep at night?
We'll see what happens tomorrow.
Item C, increasing educator diversity. There is a legislative mandate, which is Public Act 23167, Section 10, which requires that each local Board of Education submits an increasing educator diversity plan to the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner of Education may approve the plan or return it for revisions. And if it gets returned, we do have until May to make those needed revisions. I'm happy to kind of share. If you'd like to grab one and pass it down, if that's helpful. Thank you. It was in your packets, but it's a hard document to perhaps read.
Seems you were looking at my phone. I can't read it here very well.
I will. Thank you.
This is the same thing that I have right here?
It is.
Okay. I'll listen.
This one you can read.
I try to avoid paper.
Well, this one you can read.
Yeah, this one was hard, though, to kind of read, we thought, so.
No, thank you.
You prefer smaller font, too.
And I'm happy to go through some of the key elements. This was a joint effort with the administration team. We looked at our current practices, looked at things that we felt were desirable and positive, and we looked at areas for how we can improve with the ultimate goal of increasing educator diversity. There is a rubric that the state will use when viewing the plan, so it will either get approved or, as I shared, returned for revision. There are three key areas: recruitment, hiring and selection, and retention that needed to be addressed. So, recruitment, the goal is to recruit diverse educators, and diversity is in the areas they talk about: ethnic, racial, and linguistic. So, those are the three areas of diversity that we are targeting. So, what are we going to do? As an admin team, we will continue to attend career fairs when we have educator vacancies. We will expand where and how we recruit, and we will maintain our partnership and actually grow our partnership with the University of Hartford, and look at reaching out to other universities in the area to also kind of gain that trajectory of incoming professionals. Indicators of progress. We will know we are working towards our goal when vacancies are posted in a variety of places and also shared out to universities and colleges as soon as a vacancy is known. One example is we've started collecting emails from deans in education in historically black and college universities to create a listserv, to add that to the universities that we reach out to, the colleges, and, you know, CT Reeve. We work with CREC as well with their recruitment fairs. We will know we are working towards our goal because our attendance will be at the various recruitment opportunities, and we will see an increase in the ethnic, racial, linguistic diversity of our staff. What we will require for resources? We will continue to outreach and participate with both CREC and RESCO in regards to staff recruitment fairs. We will allocate the time to ensure that those are our priority for those recruitment fairs. And we will continue to access online platforms such as CT Reeve and any other pertinent listservs. Risks and mitigation. Some of the risks that might be a barrier to progress towards that goal perhaps could be reduction in force or budget constraints. Also, there's a, you know, decline in candidates that are entering teacher preparatory programs in general. So, how do we mitigate this? We will closely monitor student enrollment and retirements for positions that will be replaced and advertise as soon as possible to attract the highest interest of candidates. Communication and engagement efforts. We will continue to coordinate with the administrative team for attendance at these recruitment fairs. We will utilize visuals such as photo boards and pamphlets of students and activities to garner interest in our district for potential candidates, and we will attach our district brochure to our postings. The second section is hiring and selection. So, the overall goal that we are trying to do in this area is to train staff who will be on hiring committees regarding legal and culturally responsive practices. What will we do? We have research, and the State Department of Education has provided us with one training video. That's the Connecticut State Department of Ed video. It's the second one listed under the what column. And then, the first one is a... It's actually an FAQ, a frequently asked questions, the do's and the don'ts for hiring that's put out from the Department of Labor, which is also a very good resource. We will review our hiring rubrics for both applications, how we do a paper review before we decide which candidates we will bring in, and then also for the interview process itself. We will continue to use a structured interview process that is consistent for all candidates. This way, if we use the same questions and we follow the same procedures to avoid any biases and to ensure that a diverse group of employees and students are part of our hiring process. How will we know that we are making progress? We will increase the number of staff who have received this training in both legal and cultural hiring processes. So, as of right now, our admin team, it's a pretty lengthy video. I think it's about two hours. So, our admin team, I think all of us have watched it. And as we're putting together hiring committees, like during our first meeting, we will pull out segments of this as part of our training, along with the Department of Labor do's and don'ts with interviews. And we will ensure that a hiring committee is represented diverse cross-section of our community. What resources will be required? The Department of Labor and Connecticut State Department of Ed interviewing guidance videos and resources. Also, a scoring rubric that is reflective of best practices, and we will be looking at one that the state has for a sample and compare it to what we are currently using. Risks is a lack of a hiring need, which sometimes we are not hiring large numbers, or in some years, we are not hiring at all. So, the mitigation for that, that I have noted in the slide, doesn't completely match with that particular risk. But we looked at, you know, constantly going back and evaluating and adjusting strategies to ensure the effectiveness of our hiring practice. So, when we are hiring, that we are sure to follow all that what column, okay, to ensure that we are reaching our goal. And we need to continue to engage staff, parents, and students during the hiring and selection process to get all of their input. The last component of this plan is for retention. And the goal, we're deliberate and well-planned process, we will retain highly qualified staff members who represent ethnic, racial, and linguistic diversity. The strategies are the what? We will continue to cultivate a positive and safe school culture that promotes teacher advocacy, administrative support, and collaboration. We will have new staff check-ins and mentoring, and we will provide specific, strategic, and tailored professional development opportunities. I should say continue. Those are continuances. How do we know we are working towards our goal? The indicators will be that our staff members remain successfully employed with the East Granby Public Schools, and retention of staff members will have a proportion effect on the increase of recruiting, hiring, and retaining additional candidates of diverse What resources do we require? Mentors, professional learning that is specific to individual needs, diversity, equity, and inclusive training for all staff, and we will continue to partner with CREC for training opportunities. And we will enhance the role of the East Granby Public School Culture and Climate Committee. The risks. Some of the things we thought about would be personnel leaving if not feeling supported or valued, or personnel that might leave for a different experience. Some of our mitigation strategies is to regularly evaluate and adjust strategies to ensure the effectiveness of our retention practices, which includes the training and mentorship and professional learning, and also to have exit interviews, to receive feedback from those who are not remaining in our district. What do we need for communication engagement efforts? We will do the check-ins, supervisor-administrator with the new teacher for check-ins, collaborate with the District Culture and Climate Committee to remain active and abreast of current needs, and collect school climate data to determine areas of both strength and need. Happy to take questions or comments.
I was curious. You mentioned students in the hiring committees. I was curious when and how that happens.
Yes, we have students that are part of middle school and high school hiring committees.
And those are selected or identified in what way?
I'm not sure exactly. I believe... I don't like to speak about it, know exactly, but I believe if there is a particular teacher, like an area of, let's say, grade 11, we would look to incoming 11th grade students that would be interacting with that teacher.
Okay. So, like, we just hired a few new teachers in the middle school this past year. There was students from the middle school that were part of that hiring committee?
Okay. And we've gotten really good feedback from the candidates, you know, when we do hiring with our students on the committee.
Any other questions or comments, John?
So, I understand that this is coming down. It's statutory, then? And I understand... I agree with the purpose. I understand the purpose. Is our current staff diversity, I mean, do you have an idea as to, you know, if you put a percentage on, quote-unquote, you know, diverse candidates or diverse staff members?
Well, one of the questions we actually had for the state is how... Because the linguistic diversity.
Right.
What really... What are the parameters around that kind of identification? That was a question that a lot of us had in our last workshop, so...
Yeah, it's a really, you know, it's a broad term.
It is.
But I guess... I guess what I'm getting at, I mean, I don't know if I want to single out, you know, racial, ethnic, whatever other categories diversity you want to say, but do you find that we presently have a relatively quotations diverse staff?
I would say not particularly.
And the staff level of diversity probably is not comparable to the actual district student body diversity. Would you agree with that?
We might be close to our diverse percentage if we look at, again, if we're looking at educator or employee as well, because that's, you know, this is increasing educator. Our plan includes all staff as well, but there's...
And that's what's interesting, because you do have it saying increase the number of diverse educators and staff members.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Does the state plan include staff as well as educators?
The plan is for educator. However, when we've had our discussions, we talked more globally to include staff as well. But the overall goal is absolutely for educators.
Right.
Right. Anyone else? Okay. So, no other comments then? No comments or questions? If we've got item five, we'll hold on this later. Item five, community reports. Policy committee, if anything, now?
We are meeting next Monday evening to move, continually move forward with the comparison of our own policies to the Shipman and Goodwin model policies. So, we will have a report on what we've done after that.
Okay. Item B, I'll just report on the budget. Again, we have a budget presentation next Tuesday at the Board of Finance, showing them the 5.25% that they're requesting. They will then give us another number to work with, and we'll have a... Or they will give us that number. I don't know what they're going to do. Then we'll have another budget meeting. This will be important for us on March 27th at 5:00 p.m. Is that going to be in your office, Missy?
Most likely down the hall, where we were in the...
Down the hall.
In the...
Allgrove School.
Allgrove School Music Room, yes. Down the hall from the Board of Ed office.
Okay. So, that's the end of budget, unless anyone has anything to add from the meeting? Okay, item C, curriculum.
The curriculum committee, we met on February 15th. It was a small group of us there, but we were interested in reviewing some of the resources for mathematics available at the middle school and high school level. And Mrs. Light shared some of the iReady math programs that have been incorporated in the kindergarten through grade six, as well as the way that teachers get together to pinpoint the data and make adjustments to the instruction. And she explained that the middle school and the high school level mathematics programs are geared to meeting the State Department of Education curriculum outlines, and that parents can access all the instructional and review and assignment materials through Google Classroom if they're interested. The question was sort of raised from a few parents that had said, "Well,..." The question was sort of raised from a few parents that had said, well, how do I help my kid on this? And so she explained that that's through the Google Classroom. It's all available through that, and that's what it's standardized to, and it's more effective than handing out textbooks. They do have workbooks, and they do use the Niddly Libs and other things like that. So that was the basics of what we covered. That's all.
Okay. Item B, facilities. Ricky's not here, but I know we talked a bit about the HVAC systems. What else, Missy? Was there anything else at the facilities? I have it off the top of my head.
We went over, we reviewed the safety grant with the doors and where we were with that particular process with the RFP.
Yeah, we did a little bit of discussion about the fields, maintenance of the fields as well. Okay, item E, negotiations. I think right now we're pretty common negotiations. We just got the contract administrators approved, so we don't have anything else presently except negotiating with the Board of Finance. That's all of us.
Bob, I would say that real quick. I would thank everybody in the room that came out for the town meeting. And I would just report again that it was a unanimous vote, which is appreciated, but certainly an indication that everybody did a good job to reach a fair equitable agreement that benefits both the administrators and also the East Granby Board of Education and East Granby School District.
You're right. There weren't even any questions. Nope, there weren't any. Okay. Item six, recommended actions.
You forgot communications.
Oh, I'm sorry, communications. That's right, my fault. I heard you mention communications before, but that wasn't your report.
So we met on February 22. We first started discussing the parental newsletters and blogs with the Board of Ed, which, if everybody knows, they've been emailing those to us, so we kind of know what's going on. We spoke about parent advisories. The middle and high school will be doing advisories. The high school already met, and, oh, I put the middle school starts next week, but they met also, so the middle and high school. Am I correct? Algro and Seymour are not doing advisories? Is that what? I'm trying to remember. Did we discuss Algro and Seymour?
They typically have not done advisories.
Okay. The update, oh, and then we discussed student, Board of Ed student representatives. So actually, why I asked that question was one of the things we discussed was getting, you know, the students' feedback on school events and activities. Also discussed was a possible mentorship between them and Algro and Seymour students get their feedback. So that's why I asked her her thoughts on meeting with students, or if there was a certain group, I know Whitney even said, like, even if they could Google Meet, if there are certain kids that they met with once a month or something, just to hear their voices. And then we discussed other forms of communication, the benefits of using social media, and then we talked about the Talk Turkey newsletter. And we'll, actually, we've got to figure out another meeting soon, so. Any questions?
I'm also sending out a communication to parents regarding the budget presentation with a link to the video from our Board of Ed meeting, as well as the March 19 date, and our presentation is on the website, so if somebody wanted to look through that as well.
We anticipate the email going out to let parents know about the Board of Finance meeting.
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I see you looking this way.
The line of eyesight there.
Ms. Light is proofing my letter, and so it should be ready by tomorrow.
So we'll just notice, that makes sense.
Correct.
Far and advanced people forget too close, they don't have time, so that makes sense.
Good. Anyone else? Thank you. Now we'll get to item six, recommended actions. Can I get a motion approved of February 2024 financials, so we can discuss them?
I, I, I motion to approve the February 2024 financials.
Motion by Lyndell approved. Do we have a second? Whitney, a second? Okay. Mary?
You received a financial summary package. I think we start off with the HVAC Grant Committee continues to meet regarding the HVAC project at the East Granby High School, and it works still to be completed by December 2024. The updates on our outstanding projects have been moved from the Office of Grant Administration to the School Construction Audit Unit, so we're moving along those three projects. We completed RFQ and the RFP to obtain bids for the safety grant. We did receive one, and we accepted a bid from Meyer, which is the architect, to repair the drawings in order for us to go out to bid for the contractors. We hope the architect's work will be completed by the end of the month. We already spoke about ZONR. We locked in, I think last month, we had this, we locked in the heating oil at $2.94 per gallon, and we're still working with the town to lock in diesel fuel for next year.
That's a pretty good price.
Yes, great price. We kept waiting, 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 and finally we, you never know with, we don't have a crystal ball, so we took that price. And looking at the financials, not much has changed from last month. We still know a few things to note were Object 111, which is a certified personnel is hired due to hiring a teacher. That was a sub last year. However, if you look at Object 112, the non-certified teacher, it's a little lower than anticipated, so those two salaries are well within budget. As stated last month, two, Object 210, our healthcare, that should balance around May. Again, we put the employees portion monthly. We post that monthly, but we encumber the entire amount of healthcare for the year. Object 330, this relates to special ed and related services, which we also spoke last month. We will offset this increase from billings from our tuition students receiving services rendered in East Granby, so that should hopefully come up pretty much within budget. The Object 520 and 521, these objects are for our property liability and auto insurance within the town. You have to really net them together. In prior years, it was all separate. This year, we got one whole package, and it was just all hit the liability. So you really want to look at those together, and they're probably not over budget in the liability. And the last one, 627, our bus fuel, that was just a slight price increase from our initial quote that we locked in prior, in the prior year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from anyone? Seeing none? Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Call the motion to vote. All those approving the motion to approve the February 2024 financials, signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously? Okay. Number five, I'm sorry, 6B, for the educational diversity plan, can I get a motion? I guess we had a, well, we did a motion before discussion, I get a motion to recommend to approve it.
I'll move to approve the new educational diversity plan as the fourth of the superintendent tonight.
Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by John. Okay, any discussion or comments? My only comment, as I know, is I know they did a super job on it. What I don't like is the state asking us to approve something, and then if they don't like it, they could send it back to us from, from my reading here.
That is true.
I think our administrators did a good job. I don't know why they're asking us to approve it if they're the ones that are going to. I think it's a good idea for us to approve something.
I'll tell you why you have to approve it. So the actual, the approval part for the board is because it is required to be on our Board of Ed website. So if it's on our Board of Ed website, you'd want the Board of Ed to...
And I would imagine you've done such a good job, the state should model this instead of asking you to change it, so I think this will be good to go. Okay? Any other questions or comments on it? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carried unanimously? Thank you. Item seven, agenda items for future meetings. I guess ZONR will still be on there.
We also have some student in school spotlights coming up in the spring, as we did last year.
Is the next meeting a good time for that, or just down the road?
March 26? John, I'm sorry, you're asking, is the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
We do have a student who will be coming to the next board meeting from, from the high school.
Good. And I don't make comments?
I'm sorry, you said the 26th?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. The next, the next board meeting, oh, it's right down here. Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
My apologies, yes.
It was right there. Listen.
Okay. No comments from visitors?
Motion to adjourn?
No, adjourned. John Corker with the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lisa with a second. No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.